You're good to go?
Yep.
Okay, meeting called to go. Order, salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Trustee Trombley.
Here.
Trustee Trombley.
Here.
Mary Patrick.
Here.
We have a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting.
Still moved.
The second.
Second.
Any discussion? Corrections?
Nope, didn't see anything.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ayes.
Sorry Tom, I put you off. Motion carries. Presentation of petitions, communications, and general question period for members of the community. Seeing as we have no input, we will move on. Report from the codes enforcement officer. I believe he had a conflict tonight with another meeting, but we do have his report. Any questions or discussion on anything?
Another livestock?
Well, there was nothing, but...
Was that allegedly livestock?
Yeah, that's, it's something that just came in and so he checked on it and said there was nothing there.
Okay.
You know, you just, you get a lot of rumors and you have to check them out.
What does he mean by checked on grass issues, all cut various properties?
Where, where are you?
Below the ferrolyn system.
Checked on grass issues, all... Oh, he just means that he checked on the issues that had been problems before and they had all been cut, I believe. Okay. Are you thinking of a particular one that has not been cut?
Yeah, since like August.
I was good at reading that look.
Well, I, you know, if he hadn't put it in there, worded that way, I probably wouldn't have given that look, but done.
Unless that wasn't one of the ones in the previous month, but it was, because I know what you're talking about. I think, I think we'll just have to bring that up with him again. I don't know what else to say.
It got cut twice all summer long. The last time was around August. Once it gets to be two feet high, it lays down a little bit.
Yeah, doesn't look like so.
Rain and the wind.
Yeah, so I don't, he's always afraid of doing it like that.
Well, let's bring it up again.
Okay.
Anything else? Okay. Here's my report. Good evening. I would like to thank the DPW crew for all their hard work preparing the streets for paving. Thanks Mike, and your, and the guys. And thank the residents, the school bus drivers, and the business drivers for their patience in not using these routes during this time. I'm delighted that we were able to get Seven Streets surfaced this year, and look forward to others being done next season. Speaking of streets, I frequently hear complaints about speeding through the village. These are very legitimate concerns that I share with all of you. We have requested the sheriff to patrol more and I have noticed increased presence here. We are also ordering a digital radar sign to be installed at the top of Prospect. In addition, I ask quite simply that everyone slow down. Your trip, your trip might take a few extra minutes, but it may also save a life. I'm continuing to look for grant money to help fund the purchase of a snowplow and the replacement of some of the waterline mains. Mary and Juanita are assisting me in completing these detailed applications, and I will keep you informed as we progress on these projects. The annual trunk or treat event will be held on October 27th from 1:00 to 2:00 at the playground. We're still looking for more people to come decorate their trunks and hand out candy. And of course, we are excited to see all the children in their costumes. Call the office if you'd like to have your name added to the list of decorated trunks, or you can comment on the Facebook event page. As part of an effort to offer more opportunities in the village of Champlain, saving people a trip to Plattsburgh, there will be a job fair hosted by Weststaff on October 18th from 12:30 to 4:00, and a Medicare open enrollment clinic on October 30th from 9:00 a.m. until 3:00 p.m. Both events are at the Champlain Meeting House on Main Street. I would also like to thank the Clinton County Office for the aging, for bringing their Living Healthy Workshop Series to Champlain. We are fortunate to be able to partner with so many county and state organizations. In closing, enjoy these last beautiful days of autumn. We know winter is on the way. Remember to check on your neighbors, especially if they are elderly or housebound. A small gesture of kindness goes a long way. Thank you. Report from the trustees. Kim?
Okay, um, so regarding the, the grant money that we received from AARP, um, in working with the dock doctors, um, the grant, or the information that they've provided to give us, um, basically bare bones of what we can afford and what would be just above what we received for grant money, does not include the rollers. It's basically just including the docking material. And that's going and picking it up and installing it ourselves, so that's still $6,900, and does not include the rollers to bring the kayak up onto the area or the railings.
Or the underwater.
Supporting system.
System, right.
So, the direct docks that I found out of, I think it's Atlanta, Georgia, has a dock or kayak launch that will work, um, for rivers. They've sold it to municipalities before for commercial and residential. They said that it, they didn't see any reason why it would not work in our area. It is certainly within our price range even with the shipping and handling. Um, I don't have, I thought I had their quote printed out. I know the docket, or the launch system itself was like $1,999. The sale was still going on, but the quote he gave me was good for 30 days. So, with the shipping and handling, it was less than $3,000. Um, I'm, I'm trying to get information from AARP whether we can get an extension on our grant to allow us to work with a local businessman who's certainly willing to help us. Um, but that's going to be dependent upon what AARP comes back with. And if they say there's no extension, then we will figure out a way to make this work.
The one out of Georgia, does it have any kind of side rails or would we need to add those somehow?
Uh, I will forward you the information. It did have some.
Okay.
Not as much as what the, um, the boat doctor or dock doctor had.
Yeah.
Um, but again, that, that unit's 20 plus grand.
Yeah, okay.
Can I call that? Cause I see it's, it has two posts that you use as, in.
Okay, so we would need to devise some kind of
Or they might have
Rail system.
They might have other, um, items available that we could purchase to go with it. Um, I haven't gone that far in exploring that because I was hoping that we were gonna be able to do this more locally, but if we have to have it installed by November 4th.
Mm-hmm, less than a month.
Yep.
It's, it's just a little, again, I can comment, you know, from looking at it and looking at the, the videos and stuff, it's a much simpler device. So you put your kayak in the water and you get it into this area of containment with this launching device, and then get into it and then push your way out.
Okay. No rollers, just kind of like a seat?
Uh, no, there were, well, there were rollers, but they weren't as many as what?
No, there was no rollers. You're just in a cradle in the water.
I thought it was like a cradle.
It's a cradle in the water.
Oh, I thought there were, it looked like rollers.
And then you're, you're pushing yourself off that, on and off that cradle. So coming back in, you do the same thing. You have to pull your way back into that cradle. It's workable. It's just not, yeah, it's workable.
And I wonder what the time is for the delivery if we have to go that way?
I don't know.
Okay. Well, let me know if you get any response from AARP, or if you want me to spend some time trying to do more on it.
Yeah, I hopefully will get a response from AARP tomorrow. Laura's been good about getting back to me on the last issue I had, so it would be helpful if they had a phone number on there that they had questions on your grants. You could call a number.
That would be very helpful.
But I could not find one.
Okay. Thanks for all the work and frustration on this.
You're welcome.
Tom?
Okay, I'll report on, for both Kim and I, on the water project.
All right.
The, as we know, it's been being held up by lack of, um, information from our attorney. I don't know what's going on. I, I need to speak truthfully like that. I really don't know what's going on with the lack of information coming from Mr. May. But as far as I know, he had never met with Matt. I don't know if they couldn't get their calendars together or not. So, we don't really have a concise guidance from him in where we were at. Um, we did get to meet with the rest of, of the town team last night. Discussed that in length. Uh, we're all frustrated with the amount of time that we've lost waiting for this to take place. We came up with, which I provided to you and I forgot that our other two trustees wouldn't be here. I have copies for them. We came up with an agreed upon added verbiage to section B, um, which is the, the same cap that we've had in our previous landmaids under town. And we'll go from there. I'm waiting, they're, they're meeting tomorrow night with their board. If nothing goes wrong there and they agree to it, then we're gonna have to decide how to move forward with the attorneys. And I'm not sure how to do that with the current status where we've been flowers.
I think they request a face-to-face meeting and make an appointment. Have that worked well last time you went in?
Yeah, it's all that we have to talk to them.
Yeah, so that's what I would suggest we do.
So hopefully we get positive news. We're supposed to here by Wednesday, so.
I, I feel like this is very well done.
And apparently that's the only section that their attorney had an issue with.
Okay.
He thought everything else was very well written, very acceptable, but he felt that there needed to be, well, in, in their words, he wanted to see more specifics in regards to metrics on how we're going to determine the water rate for them. And I don't know how to put that in this agreement, cause I don't, I don't know what that means yet.
No.
I mean, we're gonna, we're gonna try to do this fairly by data, by creating some sort of metric to monitor to do that, but I, we don't have that yet, so, you know, my answer to them was, did you give an example of what he believes that should look like? Cause I had no clue.
Yeah, did Patty give them anything? Okay. All we really have are our numbers to look at.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, after each year. I don't know what else we would look at.
Well, we're gonna just shoot my expenses and...
Yeah, that's what I mean, our, our expenses.
That's it. So I, I'm not certain. Um, one of the metrics that I feel is missing is the one that I requested from our engineer in regards to the value of our
Yeah.
current system, and what it means in regards to our, our users who have invested that money. So there's a metric that I can't even talk about, cause I don't know what it is.
Yeah. Let me ask Kim again. He was referring that to somebody else. He said in his office.
Correct.
Right. Okay. Well, thank you.
That's where we're at. It's October. We should have the sign by now, and I'm hoping that...
November.
Let's hope. We have to, we have to have them somewhere.
Yeah.
I mean...
I mean, real, only, it has to be in November. I mean, the payment's due early January.
Yeah.
We keep stressing that.
Okay.
January is quickly approaching and we are no further ahead really than we were a year ago because we still don't have a signed document.
We don't, but you have made huge, huge strides in this. Keep that in mind.
But this should be done by now.
It should be.
It's every time that we walk out of a meeting feeling we're good. The next time we meet, there's something else, and it's very frustrating, and this is what keeps dragging this out.
Yeah, like this information about needing metrics specified in here.
Was never mentioned.
The first I heard about it was last night, and this was brought to their attention a month ago.
I don't even know exactly what that means. I mean, I, I get the general idea, but it's...
What he's concerned about is that, that in here, it says that the water board is going to calculate what the rate should be and give a, a recommendation to this board, and then it has to be approved by both this board and the town. And just, in their words, their attorney feels there's nothing in here, and says, how do you end that dispute? If there's a dispute, that goes on at that point?
Yeah, that's true.
But again, then what do you suggest for wording for that?
I, I guess the only other thing would be some kind of arbitration. If you, if you had two boards and one of them wouldn't agree.
I don't know.
I don't know.
I'm hopeful, but
I'm not sure.
Not sure where this is gonna go. I'm, I'm hoping that it seemed positive when we left last night, but we'll see when it comes over here after.
So I would say we should hear something.
Mm-hmm.
All right.
Okay. Um, and then I'll, I'll report on our food drive that we had.
Oh, yeah.
Since that was a community event, you know, um, it was very successful. Again, we raised, uh, 3,300 monetary contributions and
Wow.
Just under 2,600 pounds of food, so it was not our biggest, but
Wow.
It's up there in the top four.
Very good.
That was amazing.
How much pounds of food?
Almost 2,600 pounds.
Wow. That's impressive.
Yeah, yeah, and I think part, in part to that, you know, I just wanna speak. I really believe it's because it's such a broad spectrum of towns that are involved. So you get people from all these townships that were shopping at the store that support their own town, you know? I think that's how it ends up being that large. I don't think it would be if you just picked one.
Yeah.
But anyways, that was very successful. I wanna thank the community for the unending support for this, cause every year it's remarkable that only people come out and support
Yeah.
to help feed the people in these communities.
But thanks to all of you for organizing that and staffing it, and that's a, that's a pretty big undertaking.
Yeah, staffing's getting more difficult every year.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Yeah.
So cool to that group.
Um, and I wanna announce that we have a blood drive coming up on the 21st of October at the Champlain Catholic Men's Club. So please come and donate. It's a very rewarding way to help people. That's all I have.
It's probably mine, but I'm, I'm the work. It just, it's just funny. Uh, report from the club treasurer.
Um, everyone has their expense and revenue reports for September. We keep it right on track.
Yeah, that's what I noticed. Uh, the warrant repayment.
We have, uh, before we do the warrant, um...
We have a transfer?
Yeah. Um, what we have is we have the bill for the, um, the LED lights, the...
It's the mapping of them.
It's the mapping of our LED lights, and the cost was $1,471.50. Um, that wasn't something we budgeted for, so we're gonna do a transfer from A1990.4, the contingent account, um, to A5182.4, street lighting for $1,471.50.
$1,000 what?
$471.50.
Thank you.
Could I have a motion for that?
I'll make a motion.
One second.
Any other discussion? This is all part of that LED light conversion program, the streetlights. It's the first step. Uh, the group came in and they inventoried everything. And in that, they did this study and they recommended the bulbs and then it moves on that way. So this is, this is the first step really. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries. Okay, and then the, uh, the warrant.
The warrant. We have additional invoices of $2,699.45 for a total warrant of $107,702.25.
Could I have a motion, please?
I make a, I make a motion to pay the warrant for a total of $107,702.25, which includes the additional invoices.
One second.
One second.
Thank you, Kim. Discussion? I know when you first see that number, you just kinda go...
So in discussion, we should point out to everyone that that includes all the paving we just did.
Yes, that's, that's mostly the paving, and that, that comes from a chip's reimbursement. Any other questions on any of these? Any of these expenses, papers? Nope, looks good.
The only thing that's on the asphalt.
All right, all, oh, roll call.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Mary Patrick.
Aye.
Thank you. Report from the superintendent.
Well, this past month's mostly been, mostly been streets, as you had said. We did do seven, about 2,300 tons of asphalt. Uh, Moore Street, Meadow Lane, Pine Street, Screw Street, Ashline, Patricia, and Cherry Street. Um, we had a little bit left over that we finished. We started a shimco on Willow. Willow will be one of the ones next year. Finished up in the rain. Um, we still have some patchwork that we have to do, uh, where we had some breaks and some oddball things, um, along some of our road sites. We have been, uh, putting some shoulders on where needed. We have quite a bit more of that to do as time allows. Um, drains, we're still fixing some drains that were, uh, we're shimmying the road, they're pretty deep, so we've got some concrete to pour for that. Uh, sewer plant, we had a issue with our press. Bearing went in the auger, broke the auger in half. That's been fixed. We've installed that today. But on the gearbox, probably in the next couple of weeks, I'm gonna let him press. I'm gonna take that and have that fixed. The seal's leaking on the end with the shaft as a gearbox. We gotta change it, and if the bearings are bad, we're gonna do that at the same time. But this way here, at least he can, at least he can press and get the solos back down in the plant. We're also going to, um, be taking our Peterbilt out of service here. We gotta pull that, uh, cylinder's gonna be taken off, sent away to get rebuilt. Hydraulic cylinder and dump box. We're in the process right now of locating valve boxes. A lot of them were covered up with dirt. Um, so we're in the process of dig finding them, digging them, putting risers to bring them back to the grave, and, um, there's quite a few we found that are, have dirt in them. So that has to be, they have to be cleaned out so we can start our flushing. I'm hoping, cause we gotta go to get a wrench on the attorneys, some of these valves. I'm hoping that, uh, next week we can start flushing. I'm anticipating at least three weeks. We've got flushing, we've got hydrant testing. Uh, it used to be in a village we had 68 hydrants, and now with the town and village combined, we got like 163. So, it's gonna be a lot of water. And I don't know, right now with the softening, what the recovery's gonna be. So once we start, I'll have a better idea on
Yeah.
how long it's gonna take. It may take us four weeks.
Right, may take a lot longer.
Five weeks. I mean, we've got a 250 gallon a minute recovery with two softening. Uh, so if you're putting 1,200 gallons a minute out, you're only gonna make up 250.
Yeah.
You know, we used, the first day we used to do 17 hydrants. That's not gonna happen, so. Uh, we're gonna do what we can. We'll know after the first few days how things are progressing.
And when you get into that about 11, like, that's when you're just...
I'm gonna try to, I'm gonna try to keep track of how long, so I get an idea of how many gallons.
Can you provide a total to it, yeah?
Well, close.
Yeah.
Yeah, because we'll know, depending when we flush that day, we'll know how much we use when it catches up the next day. But we do flow testing, we'll know how many gallons a minute, and we use the market downstart and stop time.
Yeah, but that's a, that's a metric I'm gonna need.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's huge costs in flushing and I need, I'm gonna be...
Especially at end, and I think after this is done, we're gonna have to check it like every few weeks because to make sure chlorine residual isn't dropping, to know how often we gotta turn that. Um, so that's what we're, uh, that's what we're working on right now. Doing, getting ready. We gotta get this flushing done. I gotta get that asphalt finished before the plant's closed, but... Um, also, well, I'm gonna order a little of salt here very shortly so we can start mixing the sand that we have left to start filling our shed up. Um, there's gonna be a brush pickup as well. Um, the 18th, the 21st, the 25th, and the 28th. Three inch diameter, no longer than eight foot and le, eight feet in length. If you've got leaves, uh, clear bags, make sure your bag not loose, and one, uh, load, one truck load per property, um, which I think you probably put on the village site as well.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so just a reminder. Um, if people, I mean, there's been a lot of people using a dump yard. Some of them, uh, are doing a good job, others not so much. Um, a lot of them just pull up there and throw the stuff over the, over the stones, wherever. I did find some stuff in there. It shouldn't have been in there. Um, but it won't be much longer. Um, there's gonna be no dump yard here. We'll be, no place to put anything, so people not starting to think about, s, s, need to start thinking about what they're gonna do with their brushing leaves, cause it won't be much longer, I'd say by spring.
Yeah.
It's gonna be it for the dump yard, and I don't, we don't have another place to put it, so I don't know.
We don't have enough room for that, sure. Okay. I think we're gonna need to fence that off. I know you wanna...
Yeah, well, probably.
I think we have to talk about that.
I know.
And it's gonna...
Because that's gonna still be an issue, because people are gonna still wanna throw stuff in there.
They'll just throw things over.
So we're gonna have to put a chain link fence or something.
Well, yeah, you put about like six foot chain link fence, yeah.
Yeah, I'm just saying that there are still gonna be people that stand there and throw things in.
They now be driving a lot next door and throwing, throwing on top of the stones.
Yeah.
So, um...
Well, I think whether we close it, I guess I'll rephrase it. Whether we close it or not, we need to fence it off. Cause I only wanna utilize it
Yeah, I mean, I like it.
for your materials and so on.
Use it for a spot where everybody's not, because now it's been there so long, people just feel it. They can go no matter what, even if you close it.
So in regards to that, if we're gonna use it as a yard like we have been, I think it would look better if we fenced it off and contained it.
Mm-hmm.
You know, for, for the residential area.
Mm-hmm.
You know, so I think we need to look into that moving forward.
It'll be a little bit, but I would say...
So it's too bad people do that.
Yeah, we get a lot and abuse it. I mean, lumber, tall lumper, I mean...
Yeah, even just the fact that you, you get out and throw it.
A lot of them do.
Rocks instead of carrying it in, getting rid of it.
Carbage, you're being flower pots, whatever's there, it just, it goes, you know?
But it's, it's getting pretty, uh, it'll be much longer. I mean...
Excuse me. I jumped.
It is what it is. I mean, not much we can do about it. We only got so much room. We don't, I don't know where else we can go with it. We don't really have another spot.
I don't, I've thought about that. I don't know where else we could possibly put it. If we were to have a different one.
Something I can think about, but...
What else is pointing out there? So what are they gonna now, mulch everything?
They, they pick up, I think, once a year, and I think they chip.
That's what I mean by mulching.
Yeah.
What do they do with materials?
Well, some of it, they chip. Some of it, I don't know what happens to it, but... I mean, they may compost or something. I don't know what to do with it, to be honest.
Well, we'll have to talk about it in early spring because we'll have to make some decisions.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll have to think about that.
I mean, as far as the bring in, where you gonna, you know, if you had to haul it, where you gonna haul it to?
Well, that's what we're gonna have to do. If we can't figure a way to help the residents... Well, that's what we're gonna have to do, if we can't figure a way to help the residents. Get rid of it here, then it'd be nice to be able to give a suggestion, like you can bring it to these locations, uh, I guess we have to research that, I don't know where to go.
I, I have no idea.
Yeah.
The town doesn't have any place.
Not that I know of.
We have to get rid of our own.
Yeah.
Yeah, but what.
That's what's gonna happen in the village, cause what happens, we'll be trucking it from the village somewhere else.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, residents are gonna have to truck it somewhere, if there is any place, but there's no place right now.
Yeah, I don't know, something I have to think about.
In, within the town. Yeah.
Cause what happens is people that do have spots. People abuse it and then right, right back to the same.
Right now?
If I remember correctly, before we started using this location, we used to use the water street or, uh, water plant.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we had to dig all that out and put stone because that was all garbage.
Yep.
Underneath our, where our water plant was, it all to be stone, they all to be taken out and they wouldn't let it put sand, they had to put item four, like. Six feet deep. It's gonna cost more for our water plant because they put, there was bags of leaves and all kinds of stuff that was dumped.
Oh my gosh.
So when they built that, they had to take all that out, cause you had to get the stable ground. And they made them put item four compacted all through there. We almost, there's, there's a little bit of room there, but. We also need to think someday about some kind of pole barn to put equipment in, and everything sitting outside. It's bad.
Mm-hmm.
I've thought about that, I, I, I like that idea.
Where? You know, that's the hard, that's the, we're the kind of.
The old water tower maybe? Is that too far away?
Yeah, but where are you gonna put it? I mean, we need that room for sand outside.
No, she needs oil paint.
Well, eventually, I'd like to cut a donut and use it for storage, cover it pipe and stuff like. Where the sun doesn't.
Yeah, and you can probably put some miscellaneous equipment there.
And you got a backhoe, you got a loader, all that stuff stays right out, right outside, it's terrible.
Do I raise one of the, put a.
Eventually you got another truck.
Pole barn right in the back of this property?
I don't know where you're gonna put it.
Right at the tail end.
Where you gonna put the snow?
Yeah.
That's where all the snow goes, I mean, I don't.
Darn living in the North Country.
Yeah. Well.
I'll share where the lines are.
Yeah, we'll have to look at it, I thought too, that our equipment doesn't need to have a place to be stored.
Yeah.
There's not much room. When we have our equipment lined up actually back, because parking gets, um. Give it up sometimes.
Yeah.
You don't have any place like at the sewer plant, you know, and we use all that.
Or the water plant, like, not at the water plant, isn't there?
Is that what you're?
That's the only, that's the only place I can think of, as far as like a, you know.
Yeah. Yeah.
I mean, you really can't put a pole barn on top of. Like on Elm Street.
No.
I mean, you, you, what you got there is not, eventually that's gonna settle or, you know.
Well, I don't think that, I don't think zoning wise, we should be doing that myself, I don't know, I don't know what the zoning is for the street, but I don't think that's a good place to put it.
Just don't.
No.
So, well, some, I always have to think about it down the road.
And then the other thing is we need to start putting it in the budget.
Mm-hmm.
We need to look forward to those things.
I mean, it does not mean it's just a, something like a roof and walls, it can be stone, stone, you know what I mean?
Mm-hmm.
Something, something with preferably lights in it, but that's about it, I mean, it really doesn't have to be anything fancy.
Oh, lights and.
Something that's secure.
And outlets for plugging the equipment in.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sun is what really. It's tough.
Um, can I ask a question about the, the water boxes you had to go find?
Yeah.
Is that a result of this project? Did they get covered up when they shouldn't have been?
Yes, some I dug in, like Oak Street for instance, sixteen inches deep. They just got topside over, nobody put risers. Some I found did, others they just, I don't know if they didn't look at maps, if they didn't have risers, all they do is call, but, yes, um.
That's what I thought, so I had to, wanted to hear it. And take a sound.
Uh, yeah, kind, some of that, some of it's not. Some of it's after. Topside only after.
Mm-hmm.
So where these came. So, the ones that are filled in the bottom, we've got some with dirt that deep in them. We've got some that are slid apart inside, they were never, must be never inspected, they meant to be dug and, and lined back up. Um, but.
So you're correcting all that now?
Trying to, I gotta get on those valves to be able to flush, I mean, some of these. Some of the ones I just did were, were installed before, but they were, when they just did topside, like the last year or so, they were, whatever raised, they just topside right over them. Then put a valve box risers on them, I mean, I've got some in Oak Street sixteen inches deep, I had to put sixteen inches of risers on them, find them, dig them. Put risers and now.
Shouldn't you be keeping track of the parts and labor for that?
Well, the parts, um. Some of those parts I just went, the town had some extra parts I went and dropped. But. I mean, that should have been taken care of when it was originally done, so, uh.
Yeah, that's my point.
But can you document?
Yeah.
Okay, because that's also, uh, labor that. We shouldn't be doing that. We shouldn't have to do that, we should not have to do that.
I have to do it, cause I have to be able to flush. That's the, but I, I can, I can keep track of it, yes.
Yeah, oh, I understand.
Yeah, they can, they can know what that is.
Okay. Because that, that's another metric. Okay.
It should go against the project, which I know there's nothing, maybe nothing left, but. Still needs to be documented.
Right, but it's.
Still needs to be documented.
Time, but time is money, labor is money, so. We need to document that.
Still have a valve to put in too, but I keep reminding them for, for the crossing.
Yeah.
At some point.
Okay.
But.
Anything else?
No. That's it.
Anything on, any more research on truck here?
Yeah, I've got, uh, probably. This week maybe, the mini bid, probably can do a mini bid, cause the mini bid sent, sent in. I've got, uh, I did some, and I can show you the specs that I got.
Okay.
Um, that specs for two different ones.
I'll try to come down and then see.
So I do have them.
Okay.
I'm just gonna do it through the mini bid. Um, they're actually, they're sending them over to the body and, uh, plow to make sure everything is. Will fit, make them, has to be adjusted. You know, where they put def tanks, where they put air tanks. Dryer, to make sure that, so.
Mm.
If there's adjustments, it'll be, it'll be small, but still could be some, you know.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, definitely.
So. Yeah, I gotta, I gotta send a mini bid, I gotta s- I'm sure I have numbers, cause we did this one, but a pickup before. But I gotta find my. Our ID.
Mm-hmm.
Cause it all gets done online, you send it. Send the package with it and then they, this, this, by sending it to OGS is, we don't have to put it out in the paper for, I don't know what it costs, five, six hundred bucks. So it all goes through OGS that way, that everyone gets sent to them, they put it out, the bids go to them, they package them and then they send them to us. So it'll say, whatever you spec, it'll say, it'll list them and they say, you know. They'll list what it is and if it doesn't meet your spec, they'll list it, but they'll say this part doesn't meet what you spec. That way you can still see it, but the, and the reasons why, you know what I mean, whatever it may be. So.
Okay.
But I'll share what I have, when we, you wanna look at it, you're welcome to.
Yeah, definitely, that's it.
Thanks, Mike.
That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thanks for all you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, thanks for your work.
You guys have been working here one way. So thank you. Correspondence.
Um, JCO monthly report for September, correspondence from Larry Barcom Town Supervisor regarding water rates. Correspondence from Mayor McPatrick to Larry Barcom.
New business. Uh, first I would like to appoint Brandon McCoslin to the zoning board of appeals. I don't think that, I think that just needs my appointment.
I believe so.
Um. And I, I'd also like to appoint, uh, Sula Fave to the planning board. And I thank both of them for agreeing to serve. Um, it's nice to get some, some new faces in, in local government. They both were very happy to, uh, to get involved. Uh, computer upgrades and, and, or, uh, computer upgrades or replacement. Um. So the computers have to be, um, upgraded to Windows ten. If we only do the upgrade, the cost is around two thousand dollars, I think you all have some information on this. Um, if we replace the old system with a new one, it's around five thousand dollars. Uh, computers, I think generally last between, what, three and five years anyway.
Three, five years, they said, after three to five years.
So, I, I, I'm interested to hear how you two feel about this, but it seems to me that maybe to spend two thousand dollars for an upgrade and then maybe next year have to replace the, the. Computer, the system, because they are, how old are they?
Yeah, that's a good question.
Five.
Five years.
Six years.
Six years.
Six years.
Well, it'll be six years in, at our next.
Yeah, of course.
Budget year.
Okay, so five years, um, yeah, so it just.
So you're kinda walking on the hairy edge.
You're right on the edge. You're right, yeah, could, could they last another third year or two? Probably, but if you wanna spend two, then you might as well spend.
But then.
Or maybe, or maybe. Some of them could last another year or two.
Yeah, or maybe they won't.
But you've already wasted the money to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
An upgrade.
And this is to replace, the five thousand replaces everything?
All four computers.
All four?
Doesn't, not new monitors. We don't need, we wouldn't need.
Yeah, we don't need, yeah, we don't need new monitors. It's, it's basically the, uh. They, I don't know what you call it, the inside stuff, yeah, it's all four, right?
Hard drive.
Hard drive, yeah. Yeah, the hard drives.
Business.
And installation.
Mm-hmm.
And troubleshooting to make sure everything is. Go to work after that, uh, everything's.
Good thing is you get three years hardware service.
And I see you.
Yeah.
I just saw that.
Yep.
Yeah, so, you know.
I, I think that we should spend the five thousand, I just think that the two thousand is a little too short sighted, I like to look ahead a little more.
Mm-hmm.
I make a motion that we go with option two for new workstations to replace existing workstations at the cost of five thousand forty-five dollars and fifty-two cents.
So you're second?
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? How soon would they do this?
Um, I mean, they can get started putting it together as soon as I get a hold of them tomorrow, I can give them a call tomorrow. Actually, Wednesday's away tomorrow, but. Okay, so we can start getting things put together and. Planning a, a date to come out here and, and changing everything over from one computer, you know, our computers to the new system.
Okay. Alright.
So you kinda, I think they kinda do like one at a time.
They, they, yeah, well, like they're all, they'll get them all done at the same time.
Yeah.
But they. You know. As quick as possible, just because.
Okay.
Your, your charge is right now or to actually do it.
Oh, right.
That's their estimate.
Any other discussion?
I'm talking to the town manager.
Uh-oh.
Concerns on that?
Nope.
Good.
Roll call?
Trustee, Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Mayor McPatrick.
Aye. Thank you. Thank you. Uh, subdivision application approval, you have a, uh, an application for subdivision to the village. Um. Thanks to Mary's research and hard work. She put together an application that's, that's clear and, uh, has all the necessary information. Um. Which we really needed, I think. I guess, I don't know, did you have a chance to look through it? It's just a, I just, we need an approval, I think, that we can, that we can use this. I think it's very well done. Thanks, Mary.
Yes. This is what we had before. It was pretty much, this is what it was.
Yeah, the tiny little thing up the bottom and.
And go look in our code book and do all this other stuff.
Yeah.
This is much clearer for the planning board to be able to look at it and know what is going on.
Oh, yeah.
You know, what, what they're actually making a decision on.
And particularly planning board, because they don't meet very often, I remember being on the planning board and we meet like once a year. And every time you came, you felt like you didn't know what you were doing, because you didn't get enough practice.
Right.
So this makes it much clearer.
Nope, nice job, Mary.
Yeah. So can I have a motion just to accept this application?
And so.
And a second, second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries, and again, thanks, Mary. Um, alright, old business, um. The turf law, um, the first proposal was sent to us, I think I sent it out to you, I did get back a few suggestions. Which I added and I sent it back to, uh, Renee's office, it goes to his paralegal who is working on it and I haven't gotten anything back yet. Um. Contamination cleanup. Um. I do have a, here it is, I do have a timeline for this, I don't know if they're able to stick to it. But the timeline is that the bids will be received, um, by the eleventh of October. And they hope to be able to, um, complete the construction, receive and install the system, do all the electrical. And start up by November eighteenth. And then they're going to complete additional ceiling in the basement. Around, around Thanksgiving. So they are hoping that this whole thing will be done by the end of November.
Okay.
We are slowly moving forward on it.
Do we have, Mike, do we have what they need for electrical for that? Do we have?
They're, they're doing what's going to the box, to the panel.
And we have enough space in the panel to.
They look at that, they had electricity, they had to look at that before they started.
Mm-hmm.
So. Best of my knowledge, yes.
Okay.
Cause they, they looked at all that before they started.
Well, I just thought of it for some reason.
Cause they gotta whiter all that into the panel here.
Draw that's gonna be required, so.
Yeah.
We've got quite a few spots in those boxes.
Okay.
But they looked at all that previous to.
Okay, so that's been done.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
So that's all I have on that, I'll keep you updated if it changes. Um, the Nymer playground requirements, um, I got, uh. Got a long message from the man who did the assessment for Nymer.
Henry.
Uh, what?
Henry.
Henry. Hen- Henry Vander something or other. Um, and one of the things that's of moderate importance, um, is the, um. Mulch or the bark chips around the playground. Um, so what we decided to do to start with, because this is such an expense, is I asked for additional, uh, bids on just around and under the swings. And that's what you have, you have two bids here, they're very, very close to each other, we're gonna start with this, I can at least tell them that we're making an effort. And as we get more money, we'll continue. Um, so I would ask you to look over these bids, including two. We're going to have to make a decision, it's getting really late in the season, both of these men said they hope they could find the mulch. I think they can, but they admitted it was pretty late. Uh, you can see that they're only, what? A hundred, about a hundred dollars different.
What is our deadline for having this?
There's not a deadline, but we're supposed to start it.
Okay.
So I figured if we start with just the swings, we've at least made an effort, I also had Mike remove the little merry-go-round because it's just too dangerous.
I remember you saying that.
Yeah.
Um. So if, if they weren't able to get the mulch, but at least we can show that we've gotten quotes.
Yes. And, and agreed to pay for this part.
Yes. Um.
Do you want mine too?
Then we can.
Well, I just want to give them to, to Mike.
Um, then we can, would that suffice? If we at least get something locked in for the spring?
Absolutely, because there's a little area, I have to return their, their comment thing and there's a little part where you can write in your progress and why you might be having trouble.
Okay.
Uh, and I can write in, mulch is not accessible, it sounded like they both felt that they could get it. But the sooner we, yeah, right, right, because, yeah, it's a lot.
Yeah, reeds are coming out soon.
Yeah.
Mulch, not so much.
Right.
At least not that amount.
So there is some differences in the amounts of material, which.
Yes, I noticed that.
I know, I know. Um. One is using a lot of sand.
Yes, I've seen that.
And less mulch, I believe, is what I saw. Do you see that, Tom?
Mm-hmm.
Um.
Do you think there's a problem, Mike? How deep is the mulch gonna be?
Well, sand is another, uh, sand is another, uh, surface cover that is allowed, so I would think the sand and then the mulch on top would be fine.
Mm-hmm. Mike, is there a, a difference between a landscape, landscape fabric and the highway fabric?
Yeah. Usually landscape wa- fabric lets water through. Uh, like, feel like it's more of a felt, like an open weed? It's like we use like on mulch and whatnot, where your other one is, will hold, keeps it from coming through, so you have. Usually a, a landscape fabric is more of an open weed and, I believe, lets the water go through.
So it's not so much quality thing, it's.
Right. I think one of them is more of a, almost like a felt.
So landscape fabric would be a better first application, wouldn't it?
Lets water go through, landscape fabric usually does, usually your, your own fabric will hold it more, will hold water more. Lets water go through, landscape fabric usually does, usually your, your own fabric will hold it more, will hold water more, it's more of a tight weave.
And we wouldn't want that, would we?
Well, it's also a lot less expensive. You notice that?
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to, I'm trying to look at.
Yeah.
I'm trying to pick this apart and decide which way to go.
Yeah.
Now you see like Marty about to, to dig down, I'm like.
You can't dig too deep, because you got cement, you gotta be above the cement, but the cement just below ground level.
That's what I'm saying.
Right. Right.
So.
But it says it has to be six to nine inches of mulch to be protected.
It's supposed to be, well, they said nine inches, but I think, I think seven to nine is okay. Uh, can we even go down two inches on that?
Well, you could. I wanna talk to one person, they were talking about taking some sod out, you gotta, you gotta, you gotta level it up. You know, your ground's not, so they gotta level it up, they were gonna use them wide, big timbers.
Yeah.
And try to, because you can't have a, a ten inch plank where people gotta stand, step over it, plus you gotta be able to get in there, a handicap.
Right. That's right, well, we're just gonna leave a section open, no, well, we're gonna leave a section open at this point.
Actually a ramp.
Well, this one's doing four by four, pressure t- treated, this one's just saying. Um, where'd I read that? It wasn't specified.
It's landscaping.
What, just what is landscape edging?
Yeah.
What does it mean by that, I wonder?
It's those landscaping.
Timbers.
Timbers. Uh, there may be one or two stacked up with, uh.
That must be the ones that are flat, with two round edges?
Yeah.
That's what I'm thinking, those don't hold up as well as a four by four though, over time. It's never found any that.
I think Ross's points, new playground has the landscaping timbers, and I think that's what we've been referencing.
Okay. Okay, one of them specifies topsoil and hydroseed repair. I don't think the other one does, is, is that still gonna be done?
Um, well, I can ask about that.
Mike, I'm assuming that this quote that says topsoil and hydroseed repair, that's gonna be for whatever little bit of damage is done around that area?
Maybe, I don't know, I didn't really, I'm not sure at all, it's the first time I see it.
That's what I would say, just on the equipment being there.
And the other does. And the other one doesn't specify that. I don't know, there are both, so two hundred and sixteen dollars apart, with some differences in materials.
Well, what does the board wanna do? Because I'm really, I'm going to have to let someone.
You're, you're, you talked to him about the rubber mats, right?
I don't know, like sometime.
And he said they were too expensive.
They're too expensive at this point, so I said maybe we could add them later.
We've cattle mats, we've cattle mats, they're eating the swings, the kids don't.
Yeah.
Rubber mats for like livestock, they're like four by, no, seriously.
Yeah.
They're, they're a thick mat, just because when they drag their feet, they make holes all through that.
Yeah, and the first bid, when it was for the entire playground and we were upwards of like fifteen or eighteen thousand dollars.
We can look, we can look what they're like at farm family or, or runnings or whatever, you probably could put rubber mats.
Right. But I think because.
Just under the, just to keep, if you do put mulch, just after, to get it from, get pulled away when they're dragging their feet.
Yeah, yes. Mm-hmm, yeah, yes.
That's true, yeah, runnings are.
We'll, we can ask, and see if that's acceptable after.
Yeah.
They're probably like, under a hundred dollars or around a hundred bucks.
After. Yeah. Yeah.
It's basically where their feet touch, because you don't even drag your feet in it, it'll be undug down again.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm, no, it is, it is a good idea, but.
But that's not, I mean, that's something for later.
Yes, yeah, we'll do that maybe in the spring, we're gonna have to work on the other parts too.
Something for later. Once it freezes and the mulch, it'll be like a solid board anyway this winter, we.
Yeah.
It'll rain.
Alright, well, you're going to have to weigh in on this.
Yeah, I mean, I just tempted to go with the one that's saving us two hundred and sixteen dollars, and just trying to pull apart the specificity between the two. Material quotes. And make sure we're picking the one that gives us the best material too.
I know.
Well, the one, the higher one, he did say that he, did he just do one in Plattsburgh?
Yes, he said he just did one in Plattsburgh. And that one is all spruce, pine spruce mulch, and then the other one is sand and hemlock mulch. I don't know if it makes any difference.
Yeah, I'm gonna take plenty of pictures and go look at it, see what.
I would assume that hemlock, mulch is a little bit more durable, it'll rot quite as fast as pine.
When the water comes in spring, you'll have to turn it off.
Don't say that.
It can be out.
The landscape fabric is probably better for, for drainage.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know, I guess I would go with the, with the. Seventy, seven eighty-three estimate, but I would like to make sure he specifies that he's gonna see any damage, topsoil, any, any. Areas that are damaged or around the edges of these boxes that he's making.
And is he removing debris?
And what?
Yeah, so.
Debris removal, the other quote has debris removal, so anything that, and I did not see that in this one. Um, to be sure that, I'm going to guess he will.
Yeah.
But it's always a good thing just to be sure.
Okay. Alright.
So I guess if, if he, if those two things are met, it makes sense to go with this one at the lower cost.
Yes. And, and what if those two things are, were not included, but would be an additional cost?
Then I would go with the other one.
Okay, so you're saying if that tops the other one in price, that I should.
Yeah.
I would say if they, if they ended up being exactly the same, I would, I wouldn't have a problem going with the lower bid, even if he had a little bit of an extra charge.
Okay.
Only be, I know the type of work that he does.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
Well, it involves the work, it involves very rapid work.
Oh, I don't mean that. I just, no, I know what his work is, since we've seen it, um.
Yeah, I mean, they both threw excellent work, I agree, um, alright, so.
So we see the timeframe, who can.
Well, if, if they're doing it this time of year, you're not gonna get grass anyway, so that won't matter.
Right.
True.
Right, it would have to be done later.
Right, right.
And as far as debris removal, I'm sure if they're digging it out, they're gonna take it away, they're not gonna use it.
I mean, I'll, but I will ask, just to make sure.
But, I mean, I mean, as far as grass, you really, you can't, no grass gonna go now.
Yeah.
So if it's, if they are doing it this time of year.
Well, it'd be a waste of hydroseed, really.
Yeah.
Yeah, it would. Um, we could maybe have an agreement that they come back in the spring to, to finish that portion of that.
I'll ask him.
In the spring, we'd have to have more done.
Alright, so it sounds like you are, uh, let, let's have a motion.
Let's hold now.
Let, let's have a motion, Tom, you wanna put that into a motion?
Yeah, is that, I'm approving the estimate for seventy, seven hundred eighty-three dollars, um, you want me to state the name or?
No, I don't think you need to.
Okay. Um, for this project, for the playground, um, but I would like that approval to go along with that it will meet. Uh, the two items that are missing in his list, which is debris removal and topsoil and seed for any areas that require it.
Is there a second on that?
Second.
Thank you, any other discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you. Contact you tomorrow. Um, that's all I have.
No, well, what I meant is we have more of a playground that needs to be done, not that specific.
Right, not just.
Not just the swings.
We'll be, we'll be on the.
All, all they put in has to be done.
Yeah.
Just eventually, later some, yeah, come back and do it.
Just breaking it down, just too expensive all at once, we'll have to budget for it.
Other, other areas.
Yeah.
Well, and that's.
Unless they're satisfied.
Yeah, because, because I can say that we have, yeah, that we have started, and as we get the money, we will continue.
That, that's actually the most dangerous piece.
Are we still pursuing?
It's used so much, the swings are used so much.
Are we still pursuing, uh, new equipment or grants for new equipment?
Um, well, I hope to, I, I met with the grant writer, but it's, they're, you know, they're pretty pricey. So we need to think about if we are going to budget a little money for grant writing, you know, we don't, we can do, but. Boy, you have a good grant writer, you can get a lot.
Mm-hmm.
So, we get a lot of small ones, I mean, Amy's done a great job, Kim's done a good, a, a great job, and Juanita and Mary and I work really hard on these. On these grants, but.
Come on, nothing to do with grants.
Just stating that now, right?
It's pretty good.
I don't want to.
You get someone that knows how to do those, and knows the buzzwords, and they just are like, they just know what to do, so.
Yeah.
So, to answer your question, yes, I, I'd like to put it that.
We have money on the budget for grant writing.
Yeah. We, I saw that, I saw the line.